Is there a reason to say that on your?
No, it doesn't. We just decided it.
Okay.
I said remember, we'll do something, and then what we're going to do.
Guy, did you get a truck load used?
Yeah.
Share.
For the same.
You know how it sounds like.
Right, all the weekend.
Basically.
We'll see how they can stick here's one. Good.
Yeah. Okay, fabulous. We'll go ahead. Um, we'll start with introductions, Guy.
Yeah.
Watch your head. Yeah.
Guy Rodier Street Utility Superintendent.
Nathan Stricker, Short Trejo Seventy Three South Clear Lake Drive.
Brent Losser, Member at Large, Ninety Five Penner Drive.
Dan Rippey, One Twenty Six Lakeside Port, Ward Two.
Molly Weber, Eight Twenty Two, South Clear Lake Drive, Member at Large.
Bert Elliott, Ward Three, Ten Fifty Eight, South Clear Lake Drive.
George Tancle, One Forty Four, West Clear Lake Drive, Ward One.
Tyler Walden, Zoning Administrator.
Chris Zimmer, Tom Marshall.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Um, I will entertain a motion to move forward with the agenda that we have in front of us. You'll note there's a couple of changes from last night.
I love you.
Thank you, Dan, and a second.
George, I'll second it.
Thank you, George. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, we'll move forward with the agendas presented. Um, now Nathan is up next with the, um, we've got the minutes that were provided. I think I got all my changes to Nathan. Um, I'm sure everybody else did, so I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the February eighteenth meeting. Or if anybody has changes.
I move that. Do you accept the minutes as presented?
Thank you, George, and a second.
So you are not second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. They are approved. Thank you, Nathan. Now, Nathan, if you could present the February March voucher registered warrant, that would be wonderful.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This voucher runs from February nineteenth through March eighteenth of this year. There's a couple things to note on this voucher. We have our selective payment that came out for our insurance on the twenty fourth of February. Um, we also have AIM dues that came out. Um, and that was coming out at the end of this month. Um, or at the end of this voucher. On the sewer side, we also have NLO Environmental, which that was the bio-labs, bio-labs for the sewer. Baldwin Sewer System. Um, McAllister is also on it. That is the fix for our generator. Um, that's out, that services the lift station. And then the other thing to note on the sewer side is our Eberhart-Weimer and Click Attorney Bill. That was for appellate work that has been done in the last month, and, uh, George has gotten copied on that.
Thank you.
Um. So, uh, for this voucher, I'm asking for approval of one hundred twenty-three thousand eight hundred forty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. That is the correct amount that me and Jen worked on the second afternoon after Dan got us. Dan noticed the correction. There's some kind of problem with our, uh, formula on the voucher sheet, so me and Jen are going to redo this to make sure that we don't have this problem moving forward. So, um, that's what happened in my opinion.
Anybody have any questions for Nathan on the voucher? Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the voucher registered warrant.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the voucher, um, as written.
Thank you, Damon, and a second.
This is Brent. I'll second that.
Thank you, Brent. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. We will now move forward to new business, and I believe Guy is going to present this. Is that part of the tree trimming bids?
Yes.
Thank you.
I received.
Let me start with the map, if you want to.
Yeah, from the map out there. I turned around the screen, uh, kind of before it's. Okay. So I broke down the tree trimming into three phases to get the rest of the way around the lake. Um, which Phase One would be South Clear Lake Drive, Phase Two would be East Clear Lake Drive, Point Park out to Lakeview, and it would start at Sandpoint. Uh, and then Phase Three would be West Clear Lake Drive, Penner Drive, and Ranky Drive. Um, so I contacted, uh, Cook's Tree Service, Sevitz Tree Service, and ZK Tree Service, which are all local companies. Um, I put in a request to have my bids back by the twelfth. Uh, everybody did really good except for Sevitz forgot Phase One. They thought that was what we had already trimmed originally on outer drive. So they didn't get me finished up on quote until Thursday. But the quotes were Sevitz at fifty-two-hundred, Cook's Tree Service at eleven thousand five hundred, and ZK Tree Service at twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty. Um, that would be a seventy-five-hundred-dollar difference from the cheapest to the most expensive. Um, Sevitz came in at fifty-two-hundred, so they would be our cheapest bid, and that was for all three phases. We could break it up if we wanted. Um, but our, uh, tree trimming budget allows for us to do the rest of the lake all right now at Sevitz price.
And Guy, you shared with me the timeframe that everybody committed to. If you could share that with the.
No, they would be able to, they would be done within the next thirty days, weather permitting, which shouldn't be a problem. Um, so. So I guess I'm asking for approval for me to award bid of fifty-two-hundred, uh, Sevitz Tree Service.
What was the bill for the work that's been done on this Clear Lake Drive?
Fourteen-five-hundred, I believe. So I think those bids were fifty-one-hundred, fifty-five-hundred, and forty-two-hundred, I think is what it was.
Sounds close to it.
And I think Sevitz were upset that they missed the bid last time in nineteen-five-eight. Sharpen their pencil a lot on this one.
And you said it's covered in our budget?
Yes.
Okay.
He had a ten-thousand.
And.
And one.
Or.
Good budget.
So first of all, does anybody have any questions for Guy on the tree trimming bids for the job? Okay, hearing none. Oh, I'm sorry, Brent.
There is a large discrepancy between the bids. What is your feeling as to why?
Uh, Sevitz were upset that they missed the last bid, and they sharpened their pencil, and they came in about where I figured it should be. Cooks did not, the actual owner of Cooks did not do his bidding. He had one of his employees come out and look at it and bid it because they are out of, were out of town. And ZK, it's a guy I've known for years. Um, he's fresh, starting into the business. So I figured I'd give him a shot, but he needs to sharpen his pencil.
So now that we've heard this, we can entertain a motion to do these by each individual phase? Or I will accept a motion to do all three? So if somebody wants to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to be, uh, approve the Sevitz Tree Service for all three phases totaling fifty-two-hundred. And, uh, work can be completed as available.
This is Brent. I'll second that, and appreciate everybody's attention to public safety because obviously this ties into that with the fire department and police and school buses and everything along those lines, so.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Guy, if you could follow up with Sevitz and get that scheduled, that would be wonderful. And thank you for your work on getting three bids. Much appreciated. It makes this whole process a lot easier and the residents can see what's going on too, and they decide who they want to call, and they have their own tree trimming to do. Um, so the next agenda item, we've got two resolutions, and I just want to do a little reminder for our council with regards to resolutions. We just need a motion, but in the motion include the title as part of your motion, please, and then we just need a vote on that. Um, I think on both of these, because they do have to do with, um, benefits and finances, we'll do a roll call vote, Nathan, if you're okay with that.
Okay.
So the PERF enlargement resolution zero-two dash two-zero-two-five. Nathan, you're going to present that?
Yes, uh, so what this resolution is, uh, dealing with is the PERF, and that's our, uh, retirement program that is run through the state that is for municipalities. Uh, when I was going to sign up Tyler, uh, I made a discovery that the town of Clear Lake had never included the zoning administrator's position in that PERF um, document. So what this document is doing is including our zoning administrator into the PERF program, so we have all of our documentation, everything's in a row. So that's what this, um, document says. If you want to know any information about it, you can ask me. I think everybody's had a chance to review it. Um, the basics are the town puts in eleven to eleven-point-two percent per pay period per employee. The employee can put in three percent of their own pay into the, into the retirement plan. The town matches zero percent of the employee's donation to the, uh, plan. Um, so those are the basics. If you have any specific questions, feel free to reach out to me. Uh, but that's what this document says. If you have any questions, like I said, let me know.
Does anybody have any questions for Nathan on this resolution? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I know, uh, to approve Resolution Number O-two dash two-oh-two-five. Resolution electing Jordan Lord Martin Public Employees Retirement Fund as administered by the Indiana Public Retirement System as written.
We have a motion. Could I have a second?
George, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, George. And Nathan, if you could do the roll call vote, please.
Yes, uh, in regards to the PERF enlargement resolution zero-two-two-zero-two-five, Molly Weber, what say you? Yay or no?
Yay.
Dan Rippey, what say you?
Yeah.
Bert Elliott, what say you?
Yeah.
George Chinko, what say you?
Yay.
And Brent Losser, what say you?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. And Nathan, thank you for your work on that. I know we've had that one carry over for a while, so.
Yeah.
Glad to have that concluded. And I'm sure Tyler is.
Yeah, you're right.
You're covered now.
Oh, I have six months more now. Yeah. And if I could just chime in as, as human resource, it's nice to have a source document that supports our pension plan. We, we were acting out a pension, but we really didn't have a source document. Now we have, so. Yeah, I'm just much more comfortable with it.
Absolutely. I know we kept sending it back to Nathan a couple times, but it's good that we've got it all. These are crossed, and I get it, and so it's wonderful.
Yep.
And I think the next item, our rainy day appropriation, Resolution Zero Three dash two-zero-two-five. Nathan, you're going to present that one, I believe?
Yeah. Uh, so this resolution is for a rainy day appropriation. Uh, every year, the, um, state allows you to move up to ten percent of your budget into the rainy day for future savings and any other uses the town sees, uh, fit. Um, so what we've done is we've taken ten percent of our budget from last year, which is ninety-one thousand seven nineteen and fifty cents. And we're going to move that from our general, um, operating fund. We're going to move that into our rainy day fund. Declassifications, um, for the rainy day fund are two-two-three-six and two-two-two. That's what I had on here. So yeah, that's what that says. Uh, and on this one, we're going to do a roll call vote as well.
Yep. So does anybody have any questions for Nathan? Or George, or Dan, since you're involved from a budget perspective? Questions, comments? I don't have any either, so I'll entertain a motion. Please include the resolution number in your motion.
I'll do it. I'll do it. Uh, I propose that, uh, I make a motion for the rainy day appropriations. Additional appropriation Resolution Zero Three dash two-oh-two-five.
Thank you. I have a motion and.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second, and then Nathan will call the, please.
Yeah, uh, regards to appropriation Resolution Zero Three dash two-zero-two-five, Molly Weber, what say you?
Yes, yay.
Dan Rippey, what say you?
Yeah.
Bert Elliott, what say you?
Yeah.
George Chinko, what say you?
Yeah.
Brent Losser, what say you?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
But if Nathan, you can move forward with that.
So I had, uh, I had, uh, shared my thoughts as to, um, how to kind of bound, you know, rainy day appropriations forward. Uh, to connect those to the, uh, emergency plan. That were under cash flow now, and, uh, in that way, we can say deliberately that, uh, you know, we've got enough, uh, fiscal, um, funds to support that. Not only do we have a plan, but we can actually implement it should we need to. And it could also help us to prepare us, uh, to implement that plan. So if capital needs, uh, show up out of, uh, out of this planning process, we can that influence. And use it, so, yeah.
And then to piggyback on top of that, myself, Guy, Tyler, and Jen sat down this morning, and we had a conversation about the emergency preparedness and the kind of lift station outside.
You know, that sounds like a kind of.
Or the town hall lift station. Town hall lift station. Town hall lift station. And we think it would be permanent or a good idea.
Nathan, can we table this for a discussion, please, and so we can look at the agenda as presented?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so we don't have anything under unfinished business. We'll now move forward with our council reports, and Nathan, you were up with your financial report.
So I'll just kind of continue on. So we were talking about the need, uh, for probably some kind of security fence outside and around the call station. Uh, because if for any reason, if somebody wanted to come out here and mess with the town, that would be a very open area that they could get to and have a huge impact on our community. So myself and Guy, we were looking at possible places and kind of how to format a fence. We were also talking about a security gate and securing off this road and doing a little bit of more security around the facility here, and then also putting on some kind of camera on the back shed. Then perhaps one on the front of the building here, so we can kind of see who's coming and going. Uh, I don't think we want to hire a security company per se. We just kind of started this discussion. Um, but we wanted to bring this up to the council and just let you know.
Great. It's wonderful that you guys are all being proactive and bringing ideas forward. I think that's what we need to do. Um, as you know, and I'm sure Bert will provide an update on the emergency preparedness. Um, we're in the very early phases, and it's not a granular plan. It's a very high-level plan. But regardless, this is something we need to be thinking about. We have a lot of equipment back there. So we'll take that, it ties across many things.
Right.
Maintenance, the sewer. So thank you all for being passionate and caring about our assets. And then now, um, Nathan, if you could do your financial report.
As far as the financial reports, all the financial reporting on file, what I'm going to do next month, I'm going to do a quarterly update with the financial report of the town to show exactly where the town is at. Um, so you can look forward to that next month. Do you look forward to it or not? I'm going to do it. Um, other than that, we have Bob working on some pest control options for us. Uh, I don't really like the company we were using before. They were charging us quite a bit, so we're looking at some other options to lower the cost, and that's just for, uh, pests around the town hall. Uh, I also am doing a training for cybersecurity, and that's here, I think, next week. I'm doing that. And then there's also an AIM training coming up that, uh, I will be letting you guys know more about in the future. But right now, that's what we got going on on my side.
So on the appropriations report, we have, uh, through last year's more, uh, established budgets for the sewer and sanitation areas. I'd like to get those loaded in.
Okay.
Um, so that subsequent reports, we can track progress against our plan. And then, uh, we talked also on fund reports. I'd like to get, uh, a report that shows the projection of funding in each in each of our funds, so that we can track the receipts side as well as the expenses.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Anything else?
Just a question on that. Is that like the format of that, is that just the spreadsheet that we've been working with? When you're resisting.
Well, we'll leave it open to, to Nathan.
Oh, he's good. All right. I encourage you to use the spreadsheet.
Me too, because I went there and I know, I was like looking at the last, that would be great.
How are you see to do it? Okay. We are.
I'd be happy to work with you and set it up, but I just don't.
Okay. Yeah, we can, we can start.
Great, thank you, Nathan. Anybody have anything else for Nathan?
This would be nothing to do with running dual systems, whether. We're not running dual systems during the new reports, are we?
No, it's not the record, it's the work, it's the Excel workbook. So that way, if the numbers all match, so if say say something happens and Nathan's out and somebody has to figure out, where do you expense the cell phones? They can easily find it in that workbook. And you could, Dan, you could probably.
Yeah, well, I was just going to say, it would be nice if Keystone could, could work with Nathan and generate the report uh, right out of the data that's in there. Um, and that's a conversation that, you know, we can, I'd be happy to support. Um, that would be ideal.
You know where I'm coming from.
Yeah, absolutely, because.
Well, Nathan knows that he can, if there's somebody, yeah, and he's working.
And, and, oh, you know, Keystone just got bought out by a bigger, uh, outfit, and they're going to be incorporating some new uh, features into their systems. So, um, there may, there may be some upgrades here in the next year with the new company that bought them. So I will, I'll keep you guys updated. If there's ever any reports that you want me to try to generate, let me know the parameters you're looking for, and I can always trigger. And if I can't produce, I can at least call Keystone if everyone looks at their.
I think we've got the one we want to try.
Yes.
We've got the one identified.
Yeah.
That we want to try.
That's great. Thank you, Nathan. Um, Chris, you're up with the Marshall's report.
Uh, for the month of February, we worked a total of a hundred and seventy-eight and a half hours. Uh, we drove seven hundred and seventy-one miles. There was three traffic violations, broke zero boat and two golf carts. Uh, as far as activities in the town, there were a total of eight, there was four NCSS, two alarms, one suspicious vehicle, and one property damage. That's the part of town property. And then in the Clear Lake Township, the Sheriff's Office responded to one disorderly, one juvenile problem, one domestic and one citizen dispute, and had no um, responses within the town of Clear Lake. Um, the property damage to town property, I've talked to Brent about this, Guy was able to fix it. So we actually had a radar sign on the southern east going southbound. Uh, we believe they snowbowed, and they were blowing the snow, the snow came up. Uh, debris came up and hit the sign, so it's within the right of way. Um, got the sign, it still worked, got the sign down. Guy looked at it, he was able to fix it, um, with some epoxy and some sealant, so it's all back together. Uh, actually keep the weather and the rain out of it, and we were actually, uh, got rid of a bottle, Jennifer took it down, it's a little something garage for a while. Um, so it is out of an operational and functional, so we don't need to replace it.
Great, thank you, Chris and Guy.
It's all good.
Anybody have any questions for Chris? Okay, hearing none, we'll move Brent to you with the fire department report.
All right. Starting with a detailed report. The town of Clear Lake saw a total of six incidences, two being mutual aids, with a regional total of seven. Um, there is a note, the town of Clear Lake saw a decrease in mutual aids in February with two in twenty-twenty-five versus three in twenty-twenty-four. The town of Clear Lake increased with various calls in February with six in twenty-twenty-five versus four in twenty-four. So the township, total calls decreased in twenty-twenty-five compared to twenty-twenty-four, four in twenty-four versus one twenty-five. Regional totals were lower in twenty-twenty-four than twenty-twenty-five, seven or eight. We go to the summary. We'll see that the comparison for the area between January and February was minimal. There was a decrease of one mutual call. So kind of on par on last month. And we did get the opportunity to complete the comparison. And the comparison. Uh, we did get the opportunity to complete the comparison for twenty-twenty-four versus twenty-twenty-three. And the town of Clear Lake saw a slight increase in calls for our area. We saw about the same amount of mutual aids between twenty-three and twenty-four. We did see an increase in the regional total by twenty of calls. And just for everybody's knowledge, the regional totals include both the town of Clear Lake and Clear Lake Township, so we have a better picture of the overall area. And the increase of twenty-two, the region, was largely led by an increase of fourteen incidences for Clear Lake Township in twenty-twenty-four versus twenty-three.
Any questions for Brent? Thank you very much. And then, oh, Tyler, you're up with your. And, and Joy, the way yours looks right.
I know. So in October, we have one permit issued, um, over on East Clear Lake Drive, uh, it is a remodel of the existing single-family residence there. Uh, they're adding a door to match the existing roof line, kind of bring that back into a nice dimensional look. Uh, they're also putting a roof over their existing, uh, porch there. We have finally seen a decrease in all of the in-progress IOPs of the year from last year, so everybody's finally getting signed off, getting new forward, so that's great. Uh, we do have a couple that are opened up. Uh, some things to note, uh, we still have a couple of these UDO changes that are in the Ad-Hoc Committee, and we do have still twenty-twenty-four dash oh-four. Uh, the definitions have for public comment. I'll probably be coming down with them in the next month or so. And then also wanted to mention, um, as we were talking about the, uh, IOP fees and these ONTs, um, did not get that in back in time from lawyer to put that on this month, so we're looking forward to having that up next month.
Great. Thank you, Tyler. Any questions for Tyler?
Uh, we've got fifteen in progress, any noteworthy, uh, events?
No, nothing. Anything crazy?
Are they all?
They're all moving forward pretty.
And, uh, can, if I go to your metrics, can I still find out where they're at on the.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thanks.
We fixed that issue.
Love it.
Any other questions for Tyler? We'll move forward. Guy, you're up with your superintendent report.
Um, I worked a total of a hundred and seventy-nine hours last month. Bob worked a total of a hundred and seventy-five. We had six locates, zero alarm calls. We replaced zero pumps, repaired zero, and set up zero. Um, we had twenty-seven pumps on hand, fifteen of them are still boxed, and we don't have any waiting on repair. Average daily flow was twenty-seven thousand thirty-nine dollars per day. The sewer truck drove a total of two hundred and forty-four miles, and, uh, dump truck drove seven hundred and twenty.
Thank you, Guy. Any questions for Guy?
How big is the new sewer?
Uh, the new sewer truck, there is a ship date for the body of March twenty-eighth, so it'll be leaving Illinois and arriving in Clyde, Ohio that following, because I think the twenty-eighth is a Friday, so it'll be unloaded Monday morning. And sometime that week, Bob and I will go down and do a rebuild on the truck to make sure everything is exactly what we want before they start building it.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Guy? All right, well now to council member reports.
I, uh, I did kick off the room commission uh, meetings. So those are scheduled, uh, every other week, uh, on Thursday's dramatic. Uh, the topics that were discussed was preparations for, uh, engineering, uh, design, uh, activities for next year's road project. Uh, we also have agreement on the post-construction uh, review meeting, which is a public meeting where we look back at the lessons that were learned on the lake view. So that'll be, uh, I'll be working with Jen to get that on the calendar.
Right. Anybody else?
Heather, uh, I have an H R. Uh, as everyone knows, I'm working on, uh, uniform policy uh, to add specificity to what our commitment is to the employees. So we know they know what uniforms are gonna be, what we're committed to and of, uh, greater importance is to bring us in compliance with our salary and wage ordinance. Right now, we do address the specifics commitment of paying for uniforms and that needs to be part of the wage and, uh, salary and wage ordinance. So uh, those are two elements that are married together that I hope next month we'll be able to present. Uh, work with Chris on the police and Dan and, uh, Guy on the, uh, sewer and streets.
Great, thank you very much. Anybody else for Brent?
Yeah, an update, um, you know, on our emergency preparedness work. I know we talked about the four areas of focus last, last meeting. Wastewater treatment, access to property roads, uh, public works, which is building and equipment. And the government, governance and administration, false communication and I C and that sort of thing. So, um, we're gonna, I'm going to be leading this along with Tyler. And we're gonna be reaching out now to, to the appropriate people for each one of these for beginning to Skype and so there's a, there's sort of a template that we follow in terms of how we identify these risks and then ultimately prioritize them. Um, you know, Nathan, the, the issues you guys have brought up around the security back here definitely fit into this, right? Um, and so what we're gonna do is we're gonna start down this road. I'm really happy to have Tyler involved. A, because he's here all the time. He really knows how the place works. B, he was really involved in doing exactly this type of plan in his previous role. Uh, and then, yeah, with the follow-up tier fire experience and so on. So all that said, I think the two of us are gonna tag team this, but we're gonna be starting to reach out um, to, to those of you in each of these areas to begin this process. And then we'll just kind of build some sort of K C and sort of report out system. I don't really know how long this will take, but I do think there are things that will start to bubble up. Um, just like as you start to think about this stuff. Um, and then we can start to make, uh, decisions going forward. So that's kind of where we're at. Um, nothing more. I don't know if anyone's got any questions or you want to go.
Um, that's the, like where we're at. Okay, I'm a little, you know, to move forward, so.
Yeah. That's great. We're, yeah, we're fortunate to have the still set that Tyler brings. Um, anything else from council members? Hearing none, we'll now, um, open it up for general discussion. Do anybody in the audience have anything, questions, comments? Yes. Stay in the next meeting in your house number.
Eleven point in South Philly, but, um, just any mention about the public notice that the, um, Stu, uh, LaGrange County Court found that, uh, Ben Hoagland was liable for five hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars in fees to Clear Lake.
I will let Dan comment, but we cannot discuss legal.
No, that was just a public.
I can confirm that that is, that is what the judge ruled, judge's, uh, ruling was.
Yes. Okay. I think it's about time.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from?
This is Brent, I've got a comment.
Okay.
Um, and reflecting on, uh, the scheduled presentation last month, I'd like to state that I disagree with the premise that it should not be the responsibility of a community at whole to incur the cost of one, of one home property. And this is because the community as a whole, through its community input, surveys, elected and appointed officials decided to adopt our current U D O. Its structure and the restrictions in it are the root cause of the high co- high cost to monitor compliance with our U D O. As the community made this decision as a whole, I don't think one individual property owner should bear those costs themselves. And furthermore, when we have increases of a hundred percent, two hundred percent, three hundred percent across the schedules and we include unintended cost increases from changes to U D O which we talked about last month and the surveys, we're adding potentially thousands of dollars for people to build. And this is going to impact current projects that people were considering for twenty twenty-five. Increases in this amount or percentage wise, I think us as a council should look at and maybe approach it more the way we do a sewer and tract where the increases are laid out over years. It's transparent, so property owners and builders are aware of these changes and they can see the changes. And just wanted to get those thoughts out.
Thank you very much for sharing your feedback, Brent. Appreciate it. Anybody have anything else under general discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
You want to get a little bit of your turn and then I accept it then.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Our meeting is ended at seven thirty.